It's after the six o'clock hour, so I appreciate your patience as we get ourselves situated here. We will, um, we've just come out of closed session. Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you then. Uh, we will call to order our, the regular, um, session then, and, uh, if you will please call the roll.
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Pro Tim Short?
Here.
Mayor Enscore?
Here, and if you'd please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. And begin, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. We will open up public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on any non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff, uh, for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments should be directed towards the entire council, and any comments that are not at the microphone are not, are out of order, are not part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name, city or county of residency for the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes. Public is also allotted an extra three minutes to speak on any item on the agenda prior to any action taken by the council. Public comment. Mr. Short.
Um, here we go. Grant Worsko, I live in the county, uh, executive director of the Smith River Alliance. Welcome new council members. Um, some of you, it's the first time that I've spoken before you, but I have been here before the council on the matter of, uh, the mining in the headwaters of the Smith River. And I just wanted to, because I'm not sure if there's any comment opportunity, uh, later in the evening when the city manager brings up an item related to the city, uh, providing a letter. Uh, that would be a comment letter on the 20-year proposed mineral withdrawal. Um, I just wanted to briefly introduce myself. I will try to come back at that time in case there are questions, but I did want to say just a couple things. First of all, your other water purveyors here in the community, that would be Big Rock in Hayuchi and the Gasky CSD, of course, in Gasky. They both, in their earlier letters, when just a five-year mineral withdrawal was proposed, they also stated in that letter that they supported a longer withdrawal. Either a permanent withdrawal or a 20-year withdrawal, and for that reason, they then have already commented, uh, on this in support of it. I would also point out that the board of supervisors in their letter last year during the same time on the five-year mineral withdrawal, they asked for the permanent mineral withdrawal. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions later on this evening. Uh, there was one other item that came up. I saw in staff's work on this, and that was that, um, hard rock mining, uh, is considered the largest source of toxic pollution, pollution in the United States. And that hard rock mining, uh, strip mining is a type of hard rock mining, and I think at the time, uh, staff decided they did not want to put that, uh, citation or quote in there because they weren't sure who to attribute it to, and that's from the Environmental Protection Agency, their toxic release study of 2013. So again, thank you for your consideration on this issue for our community's water supply, and I look forward to working with all of you in the months ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. More? Yes. It's Westfall.
Good evening. I'm Donna Westfall, and I live in the city. Congratulations to all you new council members. My public comment is in regards to the sewer rate and the SRF loan, and this comment is offered from the local tax association. Unlike some accusations from previous council members that we are trying to bankrupt the city, this is simply not true. We have been trying to hold people accountable, and we hope that this council will not follow the history and patterns of past councils that resulted in wind doggles. We are offering to help you to identify the problems and to come up with solutions. And that's all I have to say tonight, so please make this a part of the public record. Thank you very much, and I wish you all good luck.
Thank you. Thanks, Don. All right. Yes.
Good evening. Randy Fugate. I live just outside of the city limits, Crescent City, in Dunlop County. I'm here, uh, on behalf of being a principal of Dunlop High School, and I'm a member of the community, and I'd like to thank you, Mayor Enscore, and the council, and welcome new members. This is pretty exciting for you. Um, I'm here really for a couple of things, really just to make comments. Um, I'd like to say thank you first for your efforts in the sister city agreements that you're working on with Rikuzin Takata. It's pretty exciting. Uh, as a principal of the high school, we're in our fourth year at this stage of really interacting with the students of Takata High and members of the city of Takata, Rikuzin Takata. In fact, right now, as we're, um, here, we're actually in the midst of planning our next visit with, uh, the folks from Japan. So they'll be here in January on the sixth, and we'll have them in our schools in the community for about a week, so we're pretty excited about that. Um, this, of course, started with, uh, the disaster, and it's become something that's beyond us and beyond what we would have ever planned to, to do at this stage. So I want to thank you for your efforts. Um, I have to, I'm kind of excited about the possibilities as it moves beyond the, the high school. We're also working on our sister, um, school agreement, but as we think about the community, and I have to think about committees that'll form out of something like this kind of work that you'll be putting together, and the people that'll come out, that'll be, uh, finding some cause beyond, bigger than themselves, uh, maybe a willingness to tr- even travel to Japan and get involved in some of the, the big efforts in that city as they're rebuilding. They're in the very beginnings of rebuilding now. We were there last year, and so some of the big projects, the, the planting of the pine forests, replanting of that, some of the city parks that will develop. And, um, beyond that, the social media and the communication and the relationships that will form, uh, my students are already and have been interacting and, um, sharing with each other. And I have to think our business folks in the future will also have some relationships that will grow from that, so I'm excited about your work. I'm excited to partner with you as a, as a high school and a sister school project, um, as you work on your sister city project, and just want to say thank you for your efforts, and thank you for letting me speak with you tonight.
Thank you. Thanks, Randy.
Yeah.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, seeing no other public comment, we will close public comment, and we will, uh, we're going to come back to our, our regular agenda. We, uh, we don't have any reports and presentations. We do have, uh, four items on the consent calendar. The council meeting minutes from November 21st, warrants claims list, uh, for the period of November 12th through November 25th, 2016. Payroll report for November 26th through December 2nd, 2016, and then the city council's schedule, um, for 2017. Do you have any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any action on the consent?
Move to approve consent calendar.
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, thank you. We do not have any ceremonial items. We have no public hearings. Uh, we would adjourn to the housing authority at this point in our meeting. If we had a meeting, but we don't, that will be at our next. Same with the successor agency. We do have one item of continuing, uh, business. Um, we addressed this last time that we would be, uh, bringing to you, or I would be bringing to you, the mayoral appointments to boards and commissions. You should have got a, uh, a paper copy of that tonight. Uh, I worked on this and was still working on this through the weekend to get it all together. Um, so if you didn't get everything you wanted, uh, I apologize. I tried to put people in places that I thought could best use your skill sets in service, and there are some areas that provided some continuation because of ongoing business that required, uh, Pro Tim Short and I to remain in certain spots because of ongoing issues. So, um, I trust that some of you have a chance to look over that just as you got here. If not, I'll give you a few minutes to take a look at that, uh, now. And if you have any concerns, this would be the time to express them. Anybody have anything? Did you get your copy? Oh, it's in the envelope. Sorry. Here. There you go. Now you have it now. All right. Okay. You're good. Mr. Follman, you're good. Mr. Greenow, you, you all right with?
Yeah, this looks good to me. Thank you. It looks good to me.
All right, now that I actually got Councilmember Keim her copy. Tick, 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 tick. Feel like I'm on Jeopardy, and I don't know the answer.
Can his clock start it up?
Yeah, it's good. You're good? All right, then if, if, if so, then, um, I will take a motion that we approve the appointments. Um, there are some of these that require specific resolutions. I'm assuming those will come back to us on the 19th, Ms. Scott?
Yes, on the 19th, or sometimes they come later after we get notice by, you know, for example, the League of Cities will send us notice that they're looking for our appointments.
Um, so I'll bring these back on consent calendars in the future as needed. Okay, thank you. All right, then I take a motion that we approve the, uh, mayoral appointments of committee, commission, and boards for 2016, 17.
I move we approve the mayoral appointments to committees, commissions, and boards, 2016, 2017.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion, a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. Thank you.
You almost said Enscore.
And I look forward to all of you guys, yeah, I know, about that, uh, uh, finding your, your place in all of these. Every one of these, uh, are important, um, parts of, of your service, uh, to the, to the community. Being on the city council is one, only one portion of the responsibility, and you will discover very quickly, um, that the amount of information that is fed to you to keep up with all this stuff is going to seem a little bit daunting at first, but I know that you guys will, uh, represent us very well. Uh, we got to move on. We are continuing a item that was, uh, tabled at our last, uh, meeting. You have a, a recommendation and a, uh, update regarding the, uh, Crescent City cab application for expanding certification of necessity. So, Mr. Vandemark, who's gonna, who's gonna introduce this to us? You, Mrs. Scott, what, Ms. Scott, what?
I believe Ms. Scott's going to introduce this for you.
Yeah, so there's not, uh, a whole lot extra to report at this time. I contacted Mr. Omen and provided him with some resources, uh, to aid him in his business formation. Um, and he did get back to me today and said that he would like additional time. It's going to take him a little while to get all of his ducks in a row. He still is pursuing this. Uh, it looks like he is going to look to incorporate, so, um, I will bring it back to you when he gives us some additional information.
From a procedural standpoint, because we chose to table this at our last meeting, I would ask for a motion to bring this off the table so that we can, um, take action on moving this off of our future agendas. No. Because who knows? Otherwise, we have to do this update every meeting until he comes back to us, so.
I'll move that we remove this item from the table and leave it off the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now that the item is back up for specific discussion, since we have no updates, then I think that we can have a consensus to agree to allow this to go off the agenda uh, until it is brought back to us by the, uh, the owner. Do we have that consensus to remove this from the agenda, future agendas? Very good, and if we'll let the minutes reflect that, that we have, uh, removed this for future until it's brought back by the, uh, the owner. All right, um, moving on in our, in our agenda here, let me swing back here for just a second. Uh, the, uh, we have no other continuing business under new business, the sister city partnership with, uh, Rikuzin Takata, uh, which, uh, Mr. Fugate just mentioned to us. Uh, we gave direction at our last council meeting to staff to begin, uh, the process. I trust that you've had a chance to read the staff report and take a look at the resolution, and, uh, Mr. Vandemark, uh, who's going to present this to us?
Again, Ms. Scott did a great deal of research on this. I would appreciate if she presents it to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so in your staff report, you'll find a little bit of, uh, the history, um, about how our two communities were sort of put in touch, uh, with one another after the 2011 earthquake and tsunami. Um, as Mr. Fugate had noted, uh, especially the youth of the communities really engaged one another. Um, there's been a lot of back and forth, but, uh, this action would move us towards more formally establishing, uh, relationship with them. So, um, as you saw, Sister Cities International, uh, requires a membership fee of $295 a year. Uh, provides us a lot of resources towards getting this done. I've also had a lot of conversation, um, with Ms. Amia Miller, uh, in the meantime, since our last meeting, and, uh, she would like to put us in touch with the, uh, Japanese consulate and the US Embassy over there to, uh, aid us in working on this agreement as well. Um, there's also been funding, uh, offered up to provide, uh, several tickets to travel over there to formally present, uh, this partnership to the mayor of, and I'll butcher the name, but Rikuzin Takata. And, um, so the first step would really be adopting this resolution, declaring our intent. I would then deliver that to Ms. Amia Miller. Uh, she would present that to their mayor, uh, to see if it was reciprocated, and, uh, then we would work on drafting an MOU, um, and start talking about travel plans to move this thing forward.
Okay. We have, uh, questions for Ms. Scott or comments, uh, regarding the, uh, the, the resolution or the process or the concept as a whole? But you want to weigh in on it? Any ideas?
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea, the, the trading of ideas between two cities who have common, common things across the ocean, I think, would be a, a lightning thing for children to participate in, so I'm, I'm all for it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Is that potential sister city similar in skies and size and scope of Crescent City? You know, is it a rural, small town in the middle of nowhere?
It is very similar, uh, to our town. Um, the, the community is similar in size to our community. It's more, uh, equal in size to the county population, but, uh, very similar climate, very similar communities. Um, and as you saw in the staff report, you know, uh, we share some of the same history with tsunamis and, uh, some sort of those rebuilding efforts. So I feel like we could definitely learn a lot from them as, um, they've had something more recently than us, and, and they feel like they could also learn from us. So, uh, I think it would be a great partnership, and, um, you know, it's nice to get Crescent City out of our box a little bit.
Yeah. And they are, they are looking at, at moving forward on this at a, at a pretty expedited process, meaning that they would like to have a delegation come by, by the end of January, the first of February to, to move forward with this. So it's, it's, it's got to move quickly. That's why we brought it back to you as quick as we could to actually start this process, because they want, they want to do it quickly. Um, but we need to do it correctly, so.
Yeah.
Those things are challenged.
The, the funding basically drives up in March, so, um, if we would like to, uh, send a delegation, we, we do need to move on it pretty quick. And, uh, assuming that you support this idea tonight, then I will work with, uh, Ms. Amia Miller to start drafting that MOU immediately, and, uh, try to have something presented to you at the next meeting that at least gets us on the, uh, the right track of what we're envisioning.
Okay. Very good. David?
Yes. Ms. Scott, is the application in here for the Sister Cities International Association, is that something that's inherent in this resolution, or is that a separate motion we need?
Um, I think that the, the dollar amount is not something that the council probably needs to make a motion on, and the, the idea to support. I, I believe, not to ask Ms. Rice, but I believe it's kind of inherent with that resolution.
It just isn't specifically mentioned. I just want to make sure the council understood that, that my hope with this would be to go ahead and apply for membership with the Sister Cities International organization.
Do you think we need the $295 specifically expressed in the, in the resolution?
Um, no, I don't think you need the dollar amount, um, mentioned, but when approving the resolution, um, you could approve the resolution and, um, direct staff to apply for membership.
Very good.
With Sister Cities International.
All right.
Thank you.
Then if, if there's, uh, do we have any public comment on the, uh, this, I, concept of a sister city relationship with, uh, Rikuzin Takata? Do you have any public comment? Close public comment. Bring it back to the council then. I'll be looking for a motion to approve this resolution along with the, uh, direction to staff to apply for, to Sister Cities International.
What's the resolution number?
2016 dash four seven.
I move we approve resolution number 2016 dash four seven, a resolution of the city council, the city of Crescent City, declaring support of a sister city partnership with Rikuzin Takata, Japan, and that is to include the application with the, um,
Sister Cities International.
Sister Cities International.
Very good. Me, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. Very good. Uh, that brings us to the end of our regularly scheduled, uh, business. Um, we do have, uh, one item that has been presented to you as a legislative item. It is the, uh, the matter of which Mr. Worsko, uh, addressed, uh, during public comment. And so, uh, Mr. Vandemark, you want to comment on this?
Yes, yeah, I'm sure you wrote it in the staff report. Uh, the council in the past has provided a letter for a five-year, five-year mineral withdrawal, um, so that they, they could just make their voice known to have minerals not withdrawn from the, the headwaters of the Smith. But the request now is to come back for a 20-year, uh, a letter supporting a longer ban on, on extraction of minerals.
Okay. Um, well, first of all, I guess I, I will, we can field any questions that you have, um, regarding the, uh, what, what's presented to you in the staff report or that which, uh, was posed, um, by, uh, Mr. Worsko, if you have any. I know that this is new for some of you, or maybe not new if you've watched some of the other news aspect of it. Do we have any, any, uh, questions that we will try to field from our new council members?
Would we have to update the letter that we would send in support or opposition, or could we just resend the same letter that we already sent?
I don't, uh, given that it, I don't know that, that resending the same letter would, would change anything, so if, if, if there was the decision to, to communicate or make comment, um, I would say we would draft, even if we were using the same language, we would draft another letter if that was something that we felt, uh, compelled to do. Short, did you have something you wanted to?
I just wanted to share with the council that, um, we've been over this same subject a few times in the past year. Um, the first time it was brought to us, we had a very short timeline to comment. Um, I believe that was by design. And the city put out a letter that, um, said that we were in favor of, um, the outstanding resource waters designation for the Smith River. We were told at that time that it was just for the, uh, North Fork of the Smith River in Oregon. Come to find out after that, we were misled. Apparently is being discussed to make the entire Smith River basin an outstanding, uh, resource water. Um, there are two or three other places in the state of California that, that have this designation. One of them is Lake Tahoe, the other is Mono Lake, and I think I'm missing one, um, no matter. I encourage you to do your, your homework on, on this designation. Uh, me personally, I think it's, uh, an economic disaster. It basically puts very restrictive, uh, language in this designation and would not allow any, um, I forget how it's worded, any degradation to the water quality. Well, on the surface, that While on the surface, that seems pretty easy to decide on, that of course we don't want to degrade our water quality. But this designation takes it to a level that you wouldn't expect, labeling something you can consider pollutant as dirt and rocks. So if anywhere in any drainage that had attributed into the Smith River, somebody wanted to build a house, you would have to go through an extensive permit application process. We were told one person near, in the drainage of Lake Tahoe, has been trying to build a house for six years now, and they're waiting for the permit process to go through. So with this in mind, I, of course, am in support of protecting our river. That kind of goes without saying. I don't think there's anybody in the county that would say they weren't in support of that. At the same time, I am not in favor of this outstanding resource water designation. So if that's the only route they're going in this rule-making, decision-making process, then I think we need to find another way. And I guess that's?
Mr. Mayor?
That's all I have.
Could I make a point of clarification?
Yeah.
I'm not certain that this letter that's been requested is asking us to support the outstanding resource water designation. I believe it's just to extend the withdrawal, the mineral withdrawal letter that we already sent, not the one that we rescinded, but a different one.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that I was on the same page. I was not present at any of those conversations.
Yeah.
But my understanding is that this is not.
You're correct. The specific request for comment right now has to do with expanding the five-year mineral withdrawal to a 20-year mineral withdrawal. The concern, I think, that Pro Tem Short shares with, I think, a concern that we have heard from the community at large is that the mineral withdrawal is one component of a much bigger issue regarding the Smith River. And I think that that is a concern that we all have, and so I have had conversation with the chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Jerry Hemmingson, with county administrative officer Jay Serena, and with the city manager, David Vandemark, to make sure that when, if we're going to comment on this, that the city and the county are unified in making an expression that is a consistent message of not only our protection of the water, but also sends a single message regarding, so that we don't find ourselves saying one thing and somebody else saying another, since obviously we need to work together. And so my recommendation would be, after reaching out to the county today, would be that we take this time between now and the 19th to determine whether or not, between the city and the county, we need to have a unified letter that we can send with both of our addresses, whatever you call that, logos on it that says this is where we are. We have a city-county ad hoc standing committee that we could meet with them if need be between now and then. That would be based on the recommendation we got from staff to research. That seems to be an appropriate way to do that, to make sure that we're, the county and the city are unified in whatever message we sent. So unless somebody has an action that they would like to take contrary to that, I would ask for us to have consensus to send this back to staff and also to reach out to the county as needed to make sure we are together in this opinion.
Thank you. And to be clear, that was the staff recommendation, is that you get information tonight and take all this information home and add to it in any electronic manner you like to enhance your knowledge. I know this is a huge project and a huge process that other staffs have spent years studying, and we just wanted to give you the basic information that we had and certainly ask you to go out and research on your own. Thank you.
And I would encourage you to do your research. I would encourage you to take a look at any information that the Smith River Alliance and Mr. Worsko will provide to you. I think it's important that we do look at the entire picture, and since some of you have not looked at, had to look at any of this, I would encourage you to do your due diligence, and then we will work together with the county, and if need be, we will bring it back for specific action on the meeting on the 19th, which still is prior to the closing of the comment period, which is the 27th of December. So we still have time to act on this if we see that that's a direction the council wants to take. Okay? So we have consensus to work on that?
My worry with this one was that it was kind of arbitrarily connected to the first request to us, and that was to comment on the rulemaking process.
Yes.
And, you know, we were, of course, told it's just a rulemaking process. Don't, you know, don't worry, you'll have plenty of time to weigh in. Well, what we weighed in on with this rulemaking process was making the rules to make it into ORWD.
Yeah.
So it's not a place that I wanted to go, but because of the short timeline, we kind of opted to, and then we had to resend the letter. And I just wanted to make sure that this comment period, I realized was just extending that mineral withdrawal period, but I didn't want it to be connected to the support of this rulemaking process. That's where I wanted to get with it.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so do we have consensus to research and send this back to staff, and then for the possibility of bringing it back on the meeting of the 19th? Are we good with that? Very good?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vandemark. So take that as direction to?
Thank you.
To take a look at that. We will do our research, and if you would, please reach out to Mr. Serena and ask where the county stands on this, so that you could provide that information back to us as well.
Certainly. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda, which brings us back to our city manager. And you have a report for us this evening?
I just have one item, and I just wanted, first of all, to thank the community. I'm sorry I was not here for the Christmas lighting. I understand you got to push the button and light the tree.
I didn't push any button.
Oh, you just countered down?
I just went like this.
Okay, perfect. Whatever it was, apparently it worked. And for the group?
Jason Wiley pushed the button. He did a fantastic job. He did not leave me standing like this in front of an unlit tree. So I very much appreciate that.
And I just want to thank the folks that at the last minute stepped in and saved, for lack of a better term, the Christmas light parade.
Absolutely.
So I understood it was a nice event, and there was a large crowd, and that's always nice to hear, even on a cool evening in Crescent City. The other thing I have is that at your council table, you will see a city council information review sheet, and I know some of you have already started this process. This is an open invitation that Ms. Scott sent you all to please make reservations or appointments and go chat with folks to find out what it is that they do for our city, including our attorney that you just met, Martha Rice, so that you can get to know what the different departments do and get to know the different department heads, so you know who's working for you. I just wanted to point this out for you, so that you make sure you take it home with it and make those reservations or appointments. And I also believe that you got your iPads. Is that correct?
Yes.
So any questions you have about those, anytime Fritz's name is on here, and he can be found at City Hall. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I have nothing further.
Nothing further. All right. Well, this is the time that you guys get to report out. You have officially been on the city council for two weeks. Now you get to tell one another what you've been doing for the last two weeks. So let's start down here. Mr. Follman, why don't you give us a report of your activities for the last two weeks as a new city council member?
It's been a lot of stopping in at City Hall and just chatting with people for the most part, you know, getting business cards from Kimmy or meeting with payroll. None of these official meetings yet. I'm looking forward to getting into those. I went to, what was it, Senator McGuire's town hall session. I had to leave that a few minutes early to get to my Native American Studies class, but I did get to see our mayor and his wonderful performance that he put on, and all the hats that you wear. Otherwise, not much to report this time.
All right. Let's go to the other end. Mr. Greenow?
All right. I was able to attend Senator McGuire's town hall as well. I thought the presentation was excellent by the mayor. Just, he has a lot of hats he's wearing.
We have a consistent theme.
That became clear. I unfortunately had to leave early as well, because my wife and I went down to San Francisco for a California School Board Association conference. I was able to attend a Brown Act seminar, as well as a seminar on gifts that we can accept as school board or as, well, elected officials. And that was quite interesting and very helpful. I also went to a border coast regional airport authority meeting today. I thought that was very informative. And that's about it.
All right.
For me.
Okay. Councilmember Keim?
Let's see. I met Senator McGuire and attended his town hall, learned a lot. It was great. I thoroughly enjoyed your speech and the many hats that you wear. Also, let's see, Friday night was the Live From Downtown event with the tree lighting ceremony and the Christmas parade. It was fantastic. Our city crew did an amazing job with all the lights, and we had lots of donations for the people that had been vandalizing these beautiful lights. So it really came together, and it was fantastic, and I really appreciate, you guys did a great job. It looked really good. And then I met with city staff and got all organized, and I got business cards also. I don't know where I'm going to put them, but anyway.
You feel like you're somebody now?
I have arrived.
There you go. Well, you are somebody. All of you are. All right.
Okay.
Mr. Short?
Sir, on the 23rd, I attended Tri-Agency, kind of working on our vision for the agency right now, so there's really not much to report out of that. Also went to the First Friday event. Wanted to thank the divas for putting that on. They did an excellent job again, and the city staff did outstanding.
Absolutely.
The downtown area looked great, very well attended. Everybody was in a great mood, even though it was freezing outside. So other than that, I also was there with you in your many hats at Mike McGuire's town hall. I also was impressed, sir.
You should have been there, Jessica.
It's great when we get chuckles from the press.
It is. It's good, yes.
And that's all I have for you, sir.
All right. Well, you guys didn't mention the fact that we got the receipt of a brand-new fire truck. You guys all got to see that brand-new fire truck, which is awesome, the partnership that we have with Elk Valley Rancheria and the $400,000 new fire truck that's going to serve this community, as well as the modernization of our fire hall, downtown fire hall. That's a great, great thing, and it was good for us to be able to be there and show our appreciation to the rancheria and the council for their partnership with us. We, what else did I do? Tri-Agency with Mr. Short. Thanksgiving holiday, nobody mentioned that we had Thanksgiving. Did you guys have a good Thanksgiving?
Very much so.
Good. I had strep throat, so arguably the absolute best eating week of the year, and I didn't get any, but that's okay. The, I wore many hats, obviously, at the senator's town hall, which I thought was well-attended by our community. I thought that we had good representation. I was very proud that every member of the city council was there in support of the city, as well as our community. We had staff present as well, and I think that it was a positive thing. I did meet one-on-one with Senator McGuire the following day, and I would just, I'd like to comment a little bit about that. I was able to express my desire to see if he could help us as we work with the state regarding the sewer loan and just the situation that we find ourselves in after the failure of Measure Q. While the failure of Measure Q was certainly a setback, I don't think it was something that was, that just put us into a tailspin, oh, no, we can't do anything. We need to find a new path. And so my first path is to go to the senator and say, can you work with us? Are there some resources? Staff has been working very hard at putting together a white paper and some documentation based on some of the same material that we had from 2014, when we were able to appeal to the State Water Resource Control Board and have the interest removed from that loan, and to come back and revisit that and update all that information, provide it to Senator McGuire. We're hoping to have a conference call in the next week or so, and then after the 1st of the year, he has indicated that he would like to have us come to Sacramento and establish a actual sit-down with the State Water Resource Control Board that he would be willing to facilitate, so that we can talk about the various possibilities of how we can address this. So I thought it was a very valuable meeting with Senator McGuire, and very much appreciate his commitment to our community. As far as other items, I attended on Saturday the MONG New Year celebration. It's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to see the value that this portion of our community that I think oftentimes is very much overlooked. For as large a community as the MONG community is here, I think oftentimes they're just not seen, but this is a very important part of our community, and certainly I would encourage you, as we look at opportunities maybe in the future, to be there and enjoy that. I'll tell you this, they do know how to feed you, and when you say, no, I am full, that means absolutely nothing, I guess in MONG, because they just keep feeding you, which was, but very gracious, and I very much appreciated being able to represent the city at that, and look forward to building even stronger relationships with them. So that pretty well brings us up to speed. Yes, Mr. Vandemark?
I neglected to ask for a little update from Mr. Weir on the former lake behind Cooper Road.
I think that that would be an appropriate time. I'm giving everything that I have, and so, Mr. Weir, if you would like to give us an update about Cooper Street, I think that that would be very helpful to all of us.
What was the name of that lake again? I believe that was coined by Mr. Vandemark as Lake Havawear.
Havawear.
But no more, for now, anyway.
Does it have a swamp now?
It's have a, yeah, have a little drainage, is what it is right now. That's only because we're pumping it. So first, I'd like to thank the council for their nice words in regard to the First Friday and the Christmas Light Parade. I was very impressed as well, and just like to thank the downtown divas. They donated their time, as well as quite a few lights. I know Home Depot donated some materials. I think Walmart donated as well. And then, of course, we had the community gathering to help us put up a lot of those lights, so it truly was.
Have you ever seen that many people in the mall at one time?
Probably not. It was, it was well-attended.
Yeah.
That's for sure. And I think enjoyed by at least everyone I spoke with. But yes, Cooper Street was also happening at the same time, so Public Works crews were not only working on the downtown area, but then we were also trying to work on Cooper, as well as we had a major water main break on Pebble Beach. So of course, it all happens at the same time. So crews were busy, but able to handle it. Cooper Street, once we had the gravity tie-in, which we talked about at the last meeting, down near Home Depot, we then concentrated our efforts, put the pumps up towards actually draining the water level down. So we dropped the water about 10 feet, or by estimated gallons, about 50 million gallons of water, we actually pumped it across. Got down to where we could actually see the existing 42-inch culvert. Looks to be compromised. The bottom is mostly rotten now. I was able to get down and actually take a look inside the pipe today. It's not going to be the easy fix. It's not a matter of cleaning this pipe and everything, getting back to normal. The pipe has at least a two-foot offset in it in the middle of the street, looks to be completely compromised. So that is the update. That pipe, just to give you some relative elevations, you know, Cooper has a super elevation, or the road's higher on one side as you come around the corner. It's about 20 feet in depth to get down to where that pipe's at. So again, not going to be an easy fix. We're going to be meeting
We're going to be meeting with county staff tomorrow, because county is also obviously affected with their county yard. That pipe not only runs across the street, and then it runs through the county yard. So meeting with them to, to talk about possible fixes, as well as city staff. So that is the update. More to come, obviously, because we don't have the, the permanent fix yet.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Weir? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to publicly thank the county staff, who have stepped up and helped us at every juncture, not only with advice, but they've actually brought equipment over and helped us rebuild the road and try to dig out the end of that, that pipe in the bottom of Lake Havawear. And they've been quite helpful, and I think will continue to be. I just want to make sure that, I know I told Mr. Hemmingson that the other night at the senator's gathering, but I just want to make, I want to make that a public comment, that the teams, the crews worked fabulously together on not just this project, but a lot of others.
Mr. Vandemark, would you, would you please pen a letter on behalf of the city, from yourself and from myself, expressing that to, to the county administrative officer and to the Board of Supervisors? I think that, I think it needs to be more than just something we do in our meeting. I'd like to have an official expression of thanks.
Absolutely.
That we can send to the county, so, because they have been a huge partner in this with some things that we could not do on our own, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Weir?
I'd just like to also just reiterate that fact. I mean, invaluable partnership, especially in this occasion. So thank you guys both for bringing that up. And the letter would be truly appreciated from myself, as well as our crew. It's been a great relationship.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Scott, seems like there's something I'm forgetting. Was there something that I was supposed to remember tonight to, to bring forward?
You had mentioned to me a letter for, regarding Redwood National State Park.
Thank you. We have community partners who have reached out to me regarding the issue that we have addressed before of the closure of the Information Center of Redwood National and State Parks. The Chamber, which I'm on the Chamber Executive Board, is writing a letter expressing their displeasure with the closure during the winter. The Tri-Agency is writing a letter expressing their displeasure with the closure of the Information Center during the winter. The County Board of Supervisors have indicated that it will be on their next agenda. Who else? Somebody else? And the Harbor reached out to say that they also would be expressing their displeasure, and have asked me to express that on behalf of the city. We have talked about this, but if I have consensus, I'd like to direct staff to, to work with all of these other entities and craft a, a letter that expresses the, what seems to be a pretty unified voice in our community of not being happy with the closure of the downtown Information Center. Just to give you a little idea, on their slowest day, they still average about 100 people through the doors. That's on their slowest day during the year. It's a huge component of that being closed, of the effect it has on, on our downtown businesses. And I think that, that we have talked about this repeatedly in two-by-two, in two-by-two by two meetings, that the community wants to express their, their views on this, and I think we need to as well. So do we have consensus that we? Anybody have a thought or comment? I don't want to cut anybody off. Anybody would like to share?
Well, the downtown farmer's market.
Yeah.
We have a tremendous amount of traffic that, that comes from that visitor's center, so it's very disheartening.
Yeah. So, okay. And right now, they've closed, and they're, they've indicated that they will reopen in May. That's the general plan, but there's not a definitive, laid-out, assured date that I have been given yet, though I have asked for that, that date. So anybody else, any other comments? Do we have consensus that we direct staff to craft this letter? We could? Okay. So, Mr. Vandemark, if you would take that direction, please. And thank you, Ms. Scott, for reminding me of what I couldn't remember, because that's an important component that we need to address. All right. Anybody else got anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right, then we, we have come to the end of our meeting, and we will stand adjourned until December 19th at 5 o'clock. Thank you.